Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Reappointment made?
No, that's the nomi- I'm sorry, that's the nomination.
Oh, this is a nomination made?
Sorry.
We'll vote on that at the next meeting. The Downtown Development Authority nominations. First, based upon new information that was provided to me this weekend, I want to postpone my at-large nomination until next week. I'd like to nominate Greg Carnego and Earl Van Dyke to be voted in for the in-district appointments to the Downtown Development Authority Board at the next council meeting, scheduled for February 23rd, 2012. May I have a second, please? A little second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Forwarded by Mayor Daniels, seconded by Councilman Teetz. Discussion, please? No discussion?
The second name, you had Earl Van Dyke.
Earl Van Dyke and Greg Carnego. Both long-term residents, business owners, well, long-term business owners in the community. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
No.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
No.
Councilmember Slater?
No.
Motion fails? At this point?
Then you would, you could come back with, you could suggest two, you could postpone it, or you could suggest two other names.
I would like to postpone until the next meeting. Do I need a resolution to postpone?
You don't need a resolution for that, you could just bring it back for the nomination.
All right, thank you. We move to the City Council nominations, first being the Building Code Board of Appeals. That is a vacant position. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Okay. Could I do these one at a time here? Resolved that Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated person to serve on the Building Code Board of Appeals. One name term expiring January 1st, 2017, Gary Abbott Thera.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Councilman Slater? Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion, please? A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Abbott Thera will be voted on at the next council meeting, next to the Historic District Commission, which is different from the Historic District, District, Study Commission. Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Your Honor, at this time, I'm asking that we postpone nominations for the Historic District Commission, and if I can just explain here, this group has not actually met since March of 2011, and we have several applications, a couple of them were expired. However, I know that both myself and the Clerk's Office is reaching out to some of the people that had applications on file here, that were expired, to see if they were interested in resubmitting their application. So at this point, I'm just asking for two-week adjournment, so that I can get some feedback from those people I was not able to reach yet before tonight's meeting.
Do we need a vote? Okay.
And for the Liquor Advisory Committee, I am, I am going to forward the following three names into nomination for a vote. All three of them with terms expiring January 31st, 2014. They're all currently serving and have requested reappointment. Max Ellert, David Og, and Timothy Payne.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by Councilman Fleming. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to the preliminary site plan review. Proposed Warrior Park Baseball Field, south side of Equity, between 1735 and 1515 Equity. Section 32, currently Zone B1, Integrated Industrial and Business District, controlled by consent judgment. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I will be brief. As you indicated, Madam Mayor, this is controlled, this property, this application is controlled by consent judgment, which means that the City Council is responsible for making a determination on the preliminary site plan, instead of the Planning Commission. In this instance, the Planning Commission is recommending body only. The Planning Commission considered this item at their January 10th meeting, and they recommended approval of the preliminary site plan. Basically, Birmingham Brother Rice High School sought to acquire property in the city of Birmingham. They were unsuccessful in doing so. They found this property on Equity Drive, which is about seven and a half acres. They believed it was ideal for a baseball field, and they submitted site plans. It's Zone IB, Industrial Business, Industrial, Integrated Industrial Business District, excuse me, that still ties my tongue a little bit. If it were not controlled by consent judgment, this would be, this would be administrative site plan approval, it wouldn't even go to Planning Commission, but again, it's consent judgment, so it's before you this evening. Relatively simple application. The Planning Commission recommended six minor changes to the site plan. Those changes were made, and it's, the package is before you this evening. The City Management recommends approval of the Warrior Park, Brother Rice Warrior Park Baseball Field, as submitted before you this evening.
Thank you very much. Can someone move the resolution, please? Madam Mayor? Um, Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Forward.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, supported by Councilman Slater. Discussion, please? I don't think there's any questions for you. A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Teetz?
And I apologize for not sending this to you sooner. Will this, will this baseball field be paying taxes or not? Not that it makes any difference, I mean, it's, it is what it is, but I was just curious. I apologize for not.
It is tax exempt.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, I was just curious, thank you.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Councilman Slater?
I will move the resolution as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Slater, seconded by Councilman Campbell. Discussion? Vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the application regarding Class C quota license and SDM liquor license for Tubuli Incorporated. Would someone move the resolution, please?
Mayor.
Councilman Fleming?
I'll move the resolution, and I think there's someone in the audience that might speak to this, if there's a question, that you call on them, they can explain it.
Okay.
John Carlin, the attorney for the applicant, will.
I'll second, I'll second.
And also, is Victor Ansera, one of the owners.
Just a moment, let's have a discussion, let's, let's get to the discussion. So we've moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Slater. Discussion on council? Did you have any questions of the gentlemen? Would everyone like to hear a presentation?
I'd like you to explain what you're asking for, thank you.
The application is, they're, they're starting to build a new restaurant.
Yes.
At that corner, called Tubuli. I've dropped off a recipe or menu for each. We are asking for a liquor license.
Could you move the, yeah?
We are asking for the liquor license that you have in the quota, to be used at this location. In addition to that, they would have an SDM, a Sunday sales permit, catering permit. The restaurant itself, I did leave a floor plan, but it would have 150 seats, there'd be a patio with, I believe, 28 seats on the exterior. It is an existing mall and, or shopping strip center that they're going at at the corner of.
Rochester and Big Beaver.
Big Beaver, right. Mr. Ansera is one of the owners. He also owns a Red Robin here in the city, and has an excellent record. His fam- his entire family has been in the restaurant business for many years, having owned quite a number of big boys at one time. They have 20 Red Robins now, and they also have another Tubuli in Farmington Hills. I personally have been there, I think it's excellent, the food's great, service is good, it's kind of a nice restaurant. It'll fit well in the area, which is also my area, because I work here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Councilman Fleming?
Just, just to clarify, this is at the southwest corner of Big Beaver and Rochester Road, and I was moving the resolution A and B, part A and B.
Okay.
I thought you seconded?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Councilman Teetz?
I think it'd be useful for the folks watching at home for you to give your 20-second commercial right now, either here nor there, about the liquor license, but just tell us a moment about your, your business.
Sure, well, let me tell you a little bit about our family. Our family has actually been in the restaurant business in southeastern Michigan since 1961. And so we certainly have a history here. We're the area developers for Red Robin in Michigan and northwest Ohio. We have 20, as Mr. Carlin said, we have 20 Red Robins in the state of Michigan, another two in Ohio. We also have a few other independent concepts as well. Portafino on the river in Wyandotte. My sons actually have Burgers in Royal Oak and Rochester Hills, and still have five big boy restaurants, which is where the family actually got started in the restaurant business. Tubuli is a new concept that we started about three years ago, two and a half years ago. It's a Mediterranean concept, mainly in the Middle Eastern type segment, but, but in general, Mediterranean concept. We have a number of Greek and Italian and various Mediterranean items on the menu. The decor of the restaurant is, is themed in, it's not, it's not what you would call a theme restaurant Mediterranean, but the colors, the artwork, the, the general style kind of senses the Mediterranean, while it's not, it's not kind of an over-the-top type of a thing with, you know, some of the other Mediterranean restaurants you may see. Our plan is hopefully to do very well here in Troy, and, and to move this thing forward, both in southeastern Michigan and elsewhere.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Further discussion?
Welcome.
A vote, please, Mrs. Bittner?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations and welcome to Troy, continuing your business in Troy. We move to consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to remove for discussion? Doesn't appear so, could we have a resolution, please?
Madam Mayor?
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Proton McGinnis, seconded by, I believe that was, Mr. Campbell. Discussion, please? Mrs. Bittner, a vote?
Councilmember Camp- or, excuse me, Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. The, next item on the agenda is the rules or procedure that are going, that were advanced in council referral. That'll be discussed in study session. Under reports, there are some very good points that detail the benefit of doing business in Troy. I wanted to thank you, Councilman Teetz, for bringing forward that list of, of talking points for our city. I think that's really a nice addition. Other than that, I didn't see anything that necessarily I thought needed comment?
Other than the citizens, this is regardless of myself, the citizens should really take a look at it, because the, the staff did a great job of assembling just a cornucopia of different facts about why businesses should come to Troy. It's a great place to be, not only live here, but bring, bring your business, and we're happy to approve, approve you when you come before the City Council. So, thank you very much for your work on that issue, appreciate it.
Thank you. May I do something?
Thank you, and I do appreciate Councilman Teetz's suggestion in that regard. You know, we can all be ambassadors, and, and whenever we see someone, talk up Troy, and using that list as a, as an underpinning guide will help all of us.
Thank you, thank you. We'll now move to the study session, meeting reconvenes in five minutes in the boardroom.
...to discuss the rules of procedure. Basically, if you just look at the current rules of procedure and let me go through the outline of some suggested changes that I would like to see discussed and possibly enacted, that would be simple. We don't need to go looking at all these other versions that have been developed. It's really very simple. First of all, under item number one, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem, I thought that... Yes, sir?
So that I'm on the same page. Are we looking at the rules and procedures that were adopted November the 8th, 2010?
2010, correct.
Not the ones we proposed them?
No.
Okay.
Those were brought forward because some of the changes that I would like to propose were part of the rules of procedure in 2008. One of them being how the Mayor Pro Tem was elected. I thought that an orderly and structured way was better than just by council from among its members. And so when I looked at the landscape that we were working with, Mayor...I mean, Councilman Fleming had been the Mayor Pro Tem during the previous council. So I wanted the three council members who were already elected to have the first opportunity to be Mayor Pro Tem, but because again, Councilman Fleming had already been recently, I thought Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis would be the first in line because she received the most votes in her election. And then Councilman Slater would be next in line as being a honorary senior member of the council, so to speak. And then I went from the newly appointed council people in order of the votes taken. So Councilman Teetz, Councilman Henderson, and then Councilman Campbell were the next in line. That's why I was proposing to have a really structured method to appoint the Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have discussion on each of the items or how do we approach this? Any?
It's a free-form discussion, so...
Okay. So nothing's going to be resolved at this meeting?
We're not making any votes.
Okay. So that's basically my thought. Is there any discussion or questions or is there something someone else would like to see?
What is the purpose of doing it? I always thought the Mayor Pro Tem was really a kind of a good position elected by the council. I guess I don't understand what the value is of basically going down from...
Having a structured way to appoint the Mayor Pro Tem?
I thought we had a structured way when we voted. So I'm kind of curious why we want to go back.
Well...
Yes?
Yes, sir?
I think if I could just give you some history. When I was appointed Mayor Pro Tem, there was a rotation. There was a protocol for...so that it was done fairly. But then there was a change made on council just to, rather than having pre-identified who was going to serve, you know, in an orderly fashion, it was determined that one of the councils, I believe in 2010?
Yeah.
2009, 2000? That it was just going to be elected by the council, whoever won it. It doesn't matter, you know, if you'd served before, whatever, whatever the jar of the council wanted. So there wasn't linear fashion rotation. It had been done that way for years. And then, for some reason, majority of the council decided to change that.
Historically, it's always been...
So it's been linear rotation historically, but then it was changed. Right?
Councilman Slater?
Yes and no. But what happened was that Councilwoman Beltramini had been Mayor Pro Tem. And because of that rotation, she was going to be up for it again before anybody else would have had an opportunity to get to be Mayor Pro Tem. So that's why it was changed, so that in instances where perhaps this protocol couldn't be followed, where it would be fair, where somebody would get it again, it was changed this way, to this way. And having it this way, you could do it that way if you wanted to, or you could look in case there was an opportunity that may come up where somebody would get it twice before somebody would get it once. That's why it was done this way. Because I know Councilwoman Beltramini was going to be up for it a second time, so we decided to change it so that...
She could pass. I mean, it was...she could have passed.
She could have passed, but she didn't. She didn't pass.
Because I wouldn't want to be forced to be Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, that's another issue. If one of us didn't want to take the responsibility...
Well, and I need to say one thing. Coming from the point of view where it was right when I took the seat, so I didn't experience it any other way. And I think in the discussions that we had when we decided to make the change, there was some, at least on my part, I guess I can't speak for anyone else, but I think that there was some discussion and some consideration taken for the fact that it really is a ceremonial position. And for the most part, we understand what the Mayor Pro Tem does, and it's awkward speaking about it because that's my position right now. But I think to some extent, it was supposed to be that in making our vote for that person, it would be based on, is this someone that can stand in for the mayor, not only in terms of the meetings, but also in attending events? If the mayor wasn't able to attend and representing the city in that fashion as well? Because sometimes when people ask the mayor to attend, if they're not available, there needs to be someone else that steps up to the plate as well. So I think that that was part of the reason, whether or not there was a willingness on someone's behalf to serve and if they would want to be nominated, but also if they would want to step up and kind of take over those responsibilities, not only at the council table, but outside of the council table as well to represent the city if need be. And that's, you know, highly unlikely, given the fact that our mayors have been very involved in the process both inside and out of the council meetings. But so I think that was kind of taken into consideration as well. And by just outlining it in linear fashion, you know, maybe at that point when their name comes up, that they would be interested in serving in that capacity, or they wouldn't want to take on some of the additional responsibilities that may come up, so...
They would still have that option, I would think. My thought is that I was honoring the longest-serving council members. That's what I think the linear fashion does. It honors the people who have served the longest and then gives them the opportunity to have the position. And that's why I wanted to make that change. The next change is...
I'm sorry. Before we go further, I don't know how you want to do this, but I think that Mrs. Bittner is going to want to take, whether there...if there is consensus, I suspect that she's going to want to incorporate that into a version that you would vote on at a regular meeting. So I don't know if Mayor, if you wanted to get, to go around and see if there's consensus on the point of appointment of Mayor Pro Tem or how you wanted to do that.
So we don't want to vote? We just want kind of a consensus?
Wouldn't be a vote. It would just need to have a nod.
Well, Councilman Henderson, Teetz, and Campbell, I'm looking.
No problem.
I like the linear fashion because it puts me second to last.
As long as someone could pass, it could be clear. I mean, I'm...
That would be possible, wouldn't it, Mrs. Bittner?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Councilman Fleming, Slater, and McGinnis. Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis.
Just asked a question. So the linear fashion would be, your definition, you have McGinnis now, next in line would be Slater, then would it be me?
Yes, sir.
Then it would be Teetz, Henderson, and Campbell?
Correct.
Is that the way you understand it?
See, and that's what came up before where, you know, I don't know if you're going to run again, but there's a possibility that Councilman Fleming could get it a second time before you ever get it. So that was the reason it was done.
And I can appreciate that. I understand.
But if that's...I don't have any problem.
Again, I would suspect that when your turn came up, if you wanted to be unanimous and allow the new council members an opportunity, you could pass.
Sure. Okay. I'm okay with that.
I don't want to...
Okay. The next change, under item number three, special meetings, moving down to D, order of business. Under item D, items not indicated in the motion called a meeting pursuant to city charter sections 4.2 and 4.3. When I read those sections, 4.2 and 4.3, to me, they didn't seem to specifically address items one and two that then followed. So I simply looked at, again, the 2008 rules of procedure, and those two line items were moved out into a separate category, just making them a little bit more specific. They are explanations actually of section 4.3 rather than 4.2 and 4.3. So it was just an item for clarification. I thought it made it easier to follow. Any discussion? It's hard to understand. I know. It's difficult. It is difficult. D, order of business, under number three, special meetings. Then there's A, call to order. B, roll call. C, items as indicated in the motion calling of the meeting. And then D, items not indicated in the motion called a meeting. And in parentheses, it says pursuant to city charter sections 4.2 and 4.3. Then the one and the two that follow...yes, sir? Councilman Teetz?
Do we have any idea why sections 4.2 and 4.3? Okay, I see. Someone reach for a...
Yeah.
I'm just curious why they enumerated that versus this other portion. And I apologize if I didn't have a good look on it.
Mayor, the reason why it's in here is because in our charter, special meetings are such...obviously there aren't a whole lot of them. And when they are called, in order to provide the greatest amount of notice to the public, only the business that's set forth in the call is conducted at a special meeting. However, if everybody were present, you could waive that for a particular situation. In my experience, I don't think it's been done, but it could be done if all of the members were there. That's what's really set forth in the charter sections 4.2 and 4.3.
Well, 4.2 really identifies who can call a special meeting. And then 4.3 identifies making variations to what is the subject of the meeting. And one and two really don't refer to section 4.2. You see what I'm saying, Attorney Boo? So I just thought that they were...they would make the issue more clear if they were pulled out and separated. It's not a...nothing worth fighting for, but I thought it was more nicely organized in the rules of procedure from 2008. And I would just recommend that we go back to that for clarification.
So the attorney?
It doesn't...I mean, this is in here just again to make sure that people reference the charter 4.2 or 4.3. There's absolutely no requirement to have that there. I think it was done just to make sure that there was compliance with the charter. And because these are unusual provisions, it kind of directs your attention to 4.2 and 4.3, to know that it's not like every other meeting.
Okay.
Added clarification?
It is added clarification. It doesn't have to be there. It is added clarification, whatever you wish to do with it. These are your rules now.
Is there any disagreement with it? I mean, it's really, it just is easier to follow, I think, when you're reading through the rules of procedure. And that's why I recommend going back to that.
I'm confused. You want to remove it or you want to add it?
No.
Add it as a different item?
It's a separate item. The special meetings are limited to what is expressly indicated in the call of the meeting. And if all members of city council approve of agenda amendments or additions in writing, number two. Those are definitions clarifying rule 4.3 more so than 4.2. So I didn't like...I thought it was confusing to have those two numbered items put together with section 4.2 and 4.3. Does that make sense?
May I ask for a clarification, Mayor?
Sure.
So then it's your intent to, after D1, then you would have pursuant to section 4.2. And then after D2, you'd have in parentheses pursuant to city charter section 4.3?
Well, no.
Are you requesting that those are just removed?
Pardon me?
Are you requesting that one and two are removed?
No.
See, I think what's confusing us is that we have a document L-1LA...
I know. And that is...here, let me show you when I typed out what I was referring to. See, here this is showing section 4.2 and 3, and then public comments and adjournment. And E becomes that amendment and agenda. So it just kind of pulls it out. If you want to make an amendment or an addition to the agenda, it clarifies.
Does anyone need a copy of the 2008 rules? Because I think that's what the mayor's referring to.
I don't know.
Is the 2008...
It's not.
Can I walk around and show people?
I think she's going to have copies made.
Is that a document right here that we need to work from?
That's the most recent version. It has on there 2000...
November 14, 2010.
This is the most...this is the one...
November 8, 2010 is in the...is out of booklet that you amended it at.
This was a...
So this is the one that's existed, right?
I don't know what the changes is.
Yeah. That's what I'm just saying. If we look at just what is existing, November 8, 2010...
Okay. Turn that over.
So that's...
No, this was...
We need 2008, 2010.
You don't want to have 2008, really.
This is 2008.
Unless what...unless...
This is 2008.
Okay.
That's what I think.
I think we all need a copy of this.
She's going to get us copies of that.
Have a apple. Thank you.
We should get that.
She's making 2010. I'll ask her.
No, she's making 2008.
Okay.
She's making copies of 2008.
This is the one from a while ago, when we first started this. So I thought that was this one.
I told you about it. After 10 o'clock, you come.
Must come with a... A sharp attack. I apologize, Councilman Slater. That was slightly inappropriate.
You're 35 yet?
No.
Well, you're 35 then.
Yeah. 31.
Mayor, do you want me to...I think I understand if I'm looking at yours. I think, can I maybe take a stab at it?
Sure.
Doing it, okay. I think what you wanted to do was remove the whole thing about pursuant to city charter sections 4.2 and 4.3. Remove that from the draft. And then E, add an additional section. So it's right after this one, add an additional section that would talk about the process to follow under 4.3 that would allow for extra things to be added when all of the council members are present. So it's adding an additional section afterwards. So you're not confusing it, so that you're streamlining it.
D.
Is that...
I'm just trying to remember why we did this in 2010. And I cannot recall just why.
The change, I believe, and it's been a while, but I think that we made it just again to reference that section 4.2 and section 4.3 were there because we did have some discussion about what can happen in a special meeting and how you can, you know, that you are limited to what is listed on the call.
And I don't necessarily want to take out pursuant to section 4.2 or 4.3. I just want to make that process of making amendments to the agenda more prominent so that everyone understands that although the agenda is set, there are mechanisms to change it.
No, but see...
Really, it's worded exactly the same, so it's not changing the intent. It's just, to me, making it more clear. I'm trying to do so very unclear.
We had the logical reason why we did it in 10. And I would say when we did it, I just can't recall why we did it. I don't think it was done, you just said. I don't know if an incident came up or something came up that we changed it, but we were here in 10, so... I know we tweaked three things every...
We...
I can't recall why we did it. I know there's somebody at home watching that...
They get those drive-throughs?
I know her name is Mary.
I wish I could remember. I just can't.
Beyond that, I know while we're waiting for Aileen to get us copies, the next items, to a large extent, just are brought forward as my effort to try to expand public comments. I know that might seem unusual, but that is what my goal is. That's one of my goals, is to have vibrant citizen participation.
Thought we had that tonight?
Well, we did. We might, you know, might be able to work on the content, but the vibrant communication, I think, is vital. Thank you. See, on page two at the top, it just throws out the amendment and the additions to the agenda in item E.
I mean, I can kind of see why we had it if it's referenced under D. But it doesn't refer to 4.2. It really only refers to 4.3. So do you have more of an issue with the reference between 4.2 and 4.3 versus the actual section that it's in?
I like...I like the amendment process to be more noticeable, to be evident. If you're looking through your agenda and you want to...you think you're thinking about a special meeting and you want to change something or make an amendment to what is going to be discussed, it's easier to find when it's bolded like that in section E. That was my thought.
I don't have an issue with that line of thinking, but I do think that it's important that we reference a specific area of the city charter. And so I think that if you want to separate it out because you think that it's easier for people to read if they're specifically looking for a process to amend it or add something to the agenda, but I think it's important where we can to reference the specific area in the city charter where that rule applies to.
And I agree. I didn't want to remove pursuant to. I'm sorry.
Perhaps we can have a compromise on page two of the 2008 rules. I think that's what the mayor would like to add some, please?
Well, we really want to talk about just where we're amending the 2010 rules.
But I think she wants to take that section and put that in 2010?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's similar to that. I want to leave, going back to D, order of business, item D, items not indicated in the motion called a meeting, all looking on November 8, 2010, present rules of procedure. I would like to leave in pursuant to city charter sections 4.2 and 4.3 because I agree with you, Mayor Pro Tem McGinnis. It needs to be identified where that comes from. But then, rather than having item one and two, just have the item E so it's bolded. If you read, the words are exactly the same.
Gotcha.
It's just bolded. So I just found it easier to find.
E, amendments, additions to agenda.
It's exactly the same words. Then, basically, the next change that I would like to recommend for discussion is in order of business number six. So now we're on page two of the current rules of procedures dated November 8, 2010. Page two, number six, order of business. We have A through H, H being postponed items. I would like to recommend that we put postponed items in front of public comments because the postponed items were discussed at the previous meeting. And so I'm thinking if we vote on them and move on, it just will move the process forward a little faster. That was my thought when I made that change.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think you may have seen a case tonight where you would want to have the public comment before postponed items. Because we had an opportunity to have the public comment on your appointments to the planning commission, whereas we would have voted on your postponed items without having any input from the public today.
Yes, I agree with you. And interesting, I'm trying to insert public comments in the different agenda items. So I might add that if we move postponed items in front of public comments, we have a public comments section for postponed items. So anyone that wants to speak on that specific issue could come before the board and make their comments. I would like to see in the general, not pointing to different sections and rules, I would like to see public comments addressing each of the agenda items at the time that we're discussing the agenda item. Because I think that it then gives better flow. Rather than having public comments all together, lumped together, and then we recess and then we make replies and then we move on to regular business, I think it gives the citizenry a better opportunity to feel connected with the decisions that are being made if they make the comments right when the issue is being discussed. Yes, sir? Councilman Fleming?
Does that mean that a person could speak on postponed items, come back up and speak in public comment on other issues? You can come back and speak maybe three or four times? The same person could?
I might add that if we move postponed items in front of public comments, we have a public comments section for postponed items. So anyone that wants to speak on that specific issue could come before the board and make their comments. I would like to see, in the general, not pointing to different sections and rules, I would like to see public comments addressing each of the agenda items at the time that we're discussing the agenda item. Because I think that it then gives better flow, rather than having public comments all together, lumped together, and then we recess, and then we make replies, and then we move on to regular business, I think it gives the citizenry a better opportunity to feel connected with the decisions that are being made if they make the comments right when the issue is being discussed. Yes, sir, Councilman Fleming?
Does that mean that a person could speak on postponed items, come back up and speak in public comment on other issues? You can come back and speak maybe three or four times, the same person could?
Well, I...
When we go through this, I don't know where we're headed with it, but is there going to be an IP for the same person to speak multiple times? Is that what your intention?
Well, my intention is to give people an opportunity to speak on the issues that are important to them. I'm not sure that they, anyone would want to speak on four or five different items, but quite frankly, if they did, if they did, I think that they certainly have the right. To me, this is the people's board. And I think that people should be given an opportunity to make comments when they feel moved to address a business item.
I, I agree with you that folks should be given a chance to speak and agree with that. What, one concern I have is trying to get the business of the city done in an efficient manner. I think folks want to be able to communicate, comment on what's in front of the city. For instance, the planning commission thing, there were lots of comments, pro con, otherwise. But also, folks had things to say about their opinions about nature center, transit center, et cetera, and those were not on the agenda. And so what I'd like to see, or the direction I'd like to see us go, is to have a section at the beginning, where it currently is, we have a public comment. And in that, you would be limited to comments on the agenda itself, and then at the end, for things that are not on the agenda. So folks, everyone, everyone that spoke tonight would be allowed to speak. No one would have their First Amendment right withheld. In the same way, our staff and folks that need to be here for the agenda itself could, you know, could pay attention and then go on to their next, their next, I mean, some of the staff leaves after they do their...
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to make, and the second part of it is, I think it starts the meeting with the right tempo and the right mentality, that, like you said, this is a business meeting, and I think people need to have that business mentality, that we have certain things we need to accomplish as a city and to spend the taxpayers' dollars wisely, we have to have that in mind. What I'd suggest is that period of time when people speak about something that isn't on the agenda would be, oh, where are my notes here? It would be before council referrals, which would also be before council comments. The reason being, two points. Number one, if someone came on, came in, but my basement floods whenever I have an inch or two of water, or, you know, I can't believe this XYZ thing happened to me, and, you know, I want to complain to the city, then, right there, that moment, we could, you know, address it with the city management, say, why did this happen, or can you explain, et cetera, et cetera. In the same way, I think the council comments can respond to what folks said, because I think the citizens, residents, are curious and want to know how, that we're listening to what they're saying. And I think, I think that's only fair, fair to the resident, fair to the folks we're supposed to be representing. And so, you know, is it, should you have it three minutes for comments going to things that are on the agenda, and then three minutes for folks that, you know, want to have a comment about something else? And could you speak at both? Absolutely. If you wanted to spend your first amount of time talking about XYZ on the agenda, and then later on, you want to, you know, complain about XYZ, then you could do both. But I think it helps, helps us mentally get through the meeting without, without some of the ugliness necessarily. And I think it also gets us into the mentality that we've been to do, and that's, that's why we're on the city council, and that's what the residents expect.
So you would put it like after city council referrals, perhaps?
The, so the initial, when folks would, it would be before the council referrals. So if somebody would come with a problem, we could, you know, address it immediately.
Are you opposed to my thought that we would address, or have people address, the item on the agenda when it's brought before us? For each item, I think that everyone should have an opportunity to speak before we make a vote. Councilman Henderson?
Along the line of what they were saying earlier, that just opens yourself, if you've got five things to talk about, now you got 15 minutes of time, somebody could jump in and talk on each one of those, which, again, wouldn't want to stifle anybody, but, you know, 2:00 in the morning, meetings are starting to look pretty realistic. And to Doug's point, we, you know, like to get on with the business at hand and...
Well, I agree. I haven't seen anyone speak on any more than one or two items in the format that we presently have, so I mean, I would...
Because one, one comment, so you get one, one chance to talk because of the rules. Like it could, a lot of which has been suggested here, been tried already, two years. And I think after you've sat, and when you heard five or six people, you know, get up to talk at five different times, we came to the conclusion that it would be best to do it one time. And I'm not saying I agree with that, and I, and I understand where you're coming from. We have a new, new group, and they want to try maybe something differently, but I had a discussion with Councilman Teetz on this. I think I could be in favor of revisiting the way it was done once before, where you got an opportunity to speak on an item. But the reason that it was changed and brought forward was so people didn't have to wait till midnight to speak, you know, that they, that they could come and speak and go home and spend the evening with their family, or, or that. See, I think you have to think of that, too, because these meetings generally go till 11 o'clock. If you make everybody wait till the end to give their comments, I don't think that's fair, personally. I like to see it at the beginning, let them have their, have their voice spoken. They can speak on any agenda item, they can speak on whatever they want to speak about, me, fine. It just seems better for the public, in my, in my mind. But if you want to, if you want to try that, I can support that, as long as we're not giving five minutes for every single item, and then another five minutes at the end, believing we'll be here till 2:00 in the morning. And I used to sit in that council meeting till 2:00 in the morning when we had that format. And it will happen.
Could we limit it to two minutes per business item? I mean, rather than five minutes? Mayor Protem?
Well, here, okay, I have a few concerns about this. And one, I think that we can see already with some of the issues that have come up over the time I've been on council, and the time we've been on council together, too. I think part of the beauty of allowing people to speak on any topic at one time is that they're able to come up there and, and you don't feel like, as the mayor, that you've got to control the conversation in terms of what people're saying. That is an added responsibility. And I think it could be an added distraction, too, if trying to chop it up, and what one person thinks is pertinent to an agenda item, people that are sitting up there may not agree that that is actually pertinent to an agenda item. So you, I could foresee you having to spend time, not only trying to keep track of the time, so that the business meeting can be efficient, but then also being in charge of the content, which I think just would give way to not necessarily kind of the free flow of ideas that we're used to getting from people when they come up and speak all at once. And I think for some of the same reasons, that, from what I understand, the reason that it was changed before, the timing this way, people know they're going to come at 7:30, with the exception of maybe some preliminary proclamations that we're doing, people can fit that into their schedule, that they're going to be speaking relatively close to 7:30, or depending on how many people are going to be there, and they can provide us the information. I think because of the business format, that it's a business meeting and not more of a town hall meeting, we're, as council members, able to sit there, take the information, take our notes, ask our questions, and then we're making a decision, decision on it shortly afterward. So from my own personal perspective, I don't see the need to try to correlate within minutes someone's comment about an issue to that issue that we're voting on. I mean, it's all happening in the same meeting. I think that council members are able to ask the questions that they need to ask and take the notes that they need to take, and then use that information when they're, when they're making their vote. And, and I can also respect your belief that it should, we should be basing decisions and allowing the citizens to have input. And I've said this before, and I'll say it again now, we appreciate having people come to the council meetings. I think that their input in the moment and...